Six o'clock, Ian.
Let's go.
Is that an 18?
Yes, sir.
That is world time.
Going to call the June 15 Hoover City Council meeting to order and ask clerk please call the roll.
Council President Smith.
Here.
Council Protem Green.
Here.
Councilmember Lyda.
Here.
Councilmember Middlebrook.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Posey.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Lord knows how much I think this world country should use an invocation right now. Madam Clerk, please, please stand.
If you'll please bow your head. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you today and ask that you let the world not have a lack of love. Let there not be selfish, arrogant, condemning, or demeaning behavior. May hearts open and hate dissipate. Let us pray for those who persecute us. Let us demonstrate the essence of your love, a love that is kind, a love that is not rude, a love that does not easily anger. Let us lead by example, the example your son set for us, showing love, compassion, and understanding to others. Let us also ask for miracles of healing. Please take away the pain and suffering from the people that are sick and hurt, that they may have comfort and restoration. Please give guidance to the doctors, nurses, and caregivers. Please be with their families and friends, that they may have comfort and strength to help. Please bring peace, calmness, and healing in these things we pray in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
If you will look at your amended amended agenda, you will notice that the Saddle Creek property in Greystone has been taken off the agenda and will be continued for 30 days. With that, here's open for motion on the minutes.
President, I move for approval of the minutes without reading.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dispost nay. The ayes have it. Announcements, Mr. Mayor. Recognition.
Well, good evening. We have two employees that we want to recognize tonight for their 30 years of service. And first one is Ben Powell. Where's Ben? Ben, come in. Ben is our, you just would stand right there between, I tell you, come around this side, Ben, if you would, between those. That would be great. Thank you. Ben is our city treasurer, and he has 30 years with us now. He started back in 1990 as an internal auditor and then promoted to auxiliary services manager in 95, and then director of IT in 1999, then our purchasing director in 2012, and just recently was promoted to our city treasurer in 2019. He's just got an incredible amount of experience in our cities. Someone that we can go to, we can trust, we understand his depth of knowledge, and his hands have been really on just about everything that we have touched that is good and positive in the city, Ben. Thank you for that. He just does a great job. When we buy things, we buy things, everything from a nickel to millions of dollars that goes through Ben. And so it's a real process that has to be followed, and all the ayes dotted and the t's crossed. It's a tedious job, but someone has to do it. And that's just part of what he does. He takes care of our city treasury as well. And so he's a keeper of the store, so to speak. Just an outstanding individual. He also serves on the RSA retirement system as one of the board of directors on that. Just the, this kind of guy you want to work for your city and spend as many years as he's had here. They've been great years. Never seen him angry. I've never seen him rattled. He's just staying, Ben, all the way through. We appreciate you so much. Thank you, Ben.
Mayor, I saw him a little rattled one time when Wi-Fi went out at an SEC tournament. Next, Donna Lacy. Donna?
She's got a, she's got a crew with her. We're going to bring her whole crew in here, because I'm not, this is not an understatement by any means. Donna, come on up.
Oh, yeah.
So Donna, Donna has been with us 30 years. She started in 1990 in Public Works as a receptionist. And in 93, she was promoted to a senior clerk. And then she landed, I think it was probably a dream job. She came to work for fire department, Chief Tom Bradley. What a great man to work for. She's actually worked for three chiefs and currently works for Chief Bentley, and just does an incredible job. Donna is really the point person in Hoover Fire Department. If you wanted uniforms, you go through Donna. If you had to get a physical, or you were injured, any, any, just really anything that happened in our department, 180-man department, man and woman department, she was the person that you would go to and make sure. She just had a great system, continues to have a great system. Particularly, I think about all the uniforms that you had to deal with. When you take, like I said, 180 people and you multiply it by four shirts and four pairs of pants and fuses and all, it's just an enormous job, just that in itself. But she also took care of, she was, started out, when we went into the transport business, Donna was one of the first to start doing our billing. So she had to learn something very outside of her comfort zone. And that's the type of employee that we have in the city of Hoover that's willing to step up and do things as difficult as that, something you'd never seen, and you did a great job. She's just a fine lady. One thing about Donna that people probably don't know, she may be in the city the best hunter of all. And many of our guys were jealous when she would bring an eight or 10-point picture to the fire, to the fire administration during hunting season. But another thing that people might not know about is her tender heart for animals, particularly strays. She will, she cannot ride down a county road without picking up a puppy dog or kitty cat that's a stray. And so that, I'll tell you a little bit about her wonderful character. Thank you for your 30 years. Hey, I want to just comment on our financial well-being statement. We, as y'all know, we started back in March, working really hard on addressing what we all anticipated to be a shortfall in our budget this year. And we set, you know, some goals in terms of what we thought we needed to reduce from our budget. And we had many conversations, all of us, but I think we all settled on a $15 million budget reduction. So our department heads and employees have been doing just an outstanding job. We're continuing to make reductions, and we'll continue to send updates to you each council meeting. But we, we feel like it's time now that we shift and start focusing on the FY21 budget. The preliminary revenue report should be in, in your email in the next few days. And they're actually looking a lot better than we thought, so that's good. We want to get those numbers finalized before we send them to you. But we've got a lot of spending controls in place. We've, since March the 12th, our spending since March the 12th through last Friday was down $4.7 million compared to the same time last year. So we've been hitting it really, really hard. And you all have this report that we sent to you this afternoon. I think you got hard copies as well. So it's not that we are not continuing to focus on reducing our spending or any costs that we identify between now and the 21 budget. But we believe that we've identified where we're going. We've worked closely with each of you to reach that number. We, we are hopeful we don't have to go to 15 million preliminarily. It doesn't look like that, but we'll, we'll continue to monitor it. It's not, we're not going to, just because we're kind of getting a good report, open the floodgates, so to speak. We're going to make sure that we continue to do a great job in controlling our spending. So I appreciate you allowing me to give you that report. And then I'm, I'm going to ask Alan to come up and go through this document with you. And I think Tina will probably have some things to say as well. On the, okay, all right.
Mayor, could I ask you real quick? In looking at the numbers, it says from capital, 6.507 million. Would that, would that be 6.207 with the 3 million in cash? Or is that 3 million needed to balance things out?
We pull that, we pull that 3 million out of the capital, separate.
So we still need the 6.5 in addition to the 3?
So this is just an update, a little modification of the reports you've been getting, but it shows operating cuts. The mayor mentioned departmental reductions, and you'll hear about that from Ms. Bolt on the agenda item dealing with the budget amendment. That will cover specifically under operating lines one and line three. So cuts from operating generally and then canceled events. We've had nice growth in line two, savings from unfilled positions. You see that's up by 161,503 for a total of 1.197 year-to-date, or from the time that the positions were vacated to the end of the budget year. We still are working with a target on overtime reductions of 501,000. And we have moved those, we haven't moved any additional capital projects to escrow, but you see the ones that were listed previously at 306,000. So the total proposed from operating up till now is $5,492,836. That will continue to grow primarily from additional operating cuts that we can identify and from additional savings for future unfilled positions. That constitutes 37% of the $15 million goal coming from operating. Under capital, I think we found all the vehicles, and so we're holding fast at the $537,000. Capital project closeouts does continue to grow a little bit. I think it's up by $50,000 this time to just over almost $333,000. Might find some additional funds there as other existing projects come to conclusion. If they have any cash balance remaining, we'll reflect it there. And then, so that leaves us with a savings of potential canceled capital project, $5,637,247, or a total from capital of $6,507, or 43% of the 15 million. And then we, as the mayor mentioned, we showed that unallocated cash as a line item of its own going forward, because it's just cash. It just depends on which pocket you put it in, as to what label we put on it. So we're just identifying it as 3 million in cash, which is 20% of the $15 million goal. So if we go to the current revenue worst-case scenario of 15 million, this is how we would propose to cover it. If it lands somewhere below that number, which we are increasingly confident it will land below that number, then we would work with the operating cuts first, and then the capital and the cash at the council's behest, depending on what you, what reductions you felt were in order. The second page quickly is just a graph that shows you what the mayor mentioned about purchasing volume. Mr. Powell has been diligent about tracking that for us. This runs March 1 to June 12, so from roughly the beginning of the COVID-known impact, when we knew we were going to have businesses shut down, et cetera, through this past Friday, and you'll see it for two years prior and then year-to-date. And as the mayor mentioned, we're currently at 4.7 million less in purchase order volume for the same period versus last year. So again, extreme gratitude to our department heads, their administrators, their people involved in their purchasing processes. I'm continuing to look at every single purchase order citywide. They are few and small. I'm seeing purchase orders for $89 to fix a sprinkler system and a little bit over here to fix a sidewalk. Nobody's making big purchases, and that's what's contributing to that, that, that number. So we appreciate everything that they're doing. Any questions on any of that?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
One request, Axe. So much of our economy, we base it upon behavior. Can we, can I at least get a, a forecast of what took place in, starting 2008 up until 2012? Because I think that's probably the only comparison locally we can use when we went through the mortgage crisis.
Thinking about sales taxes?
Just revenue versus expenses versus sale tax.
Sure.
Because it took roughly 12, four years to start moving into uptick after behavior. So if I can just get a, what that occurred in 08 to 12?
Absolutely.
That would have been the time of the recession, right, Mr. President?
That's correct. It started in, I want to say end of 17, but might as well just say 18. I mean, 2007, might as well say 2008.
Right. Be happy to.
Mr. Rice, since we haven't brought up the consent agenda yet, on item 14 of those, just those three positions, right?
This is the positions for the part, Tom.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. I remember. I had to stop and think. Those are the seasonal grass cutters.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, and that was, we went ahead and factored those out of this report on the savings for personnel, assuming that they would be, would be approved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any other reports?
Mr. President. Before, before you go, Alan, I had a couple of things I want to know. I know we were getting those numbers soon on preliminary numbers for what would be April. And then there'll be, of course, secondary after we firm everything up. At what point in time would we look at where we are and possibly scaling back? Would that be like a July or maybe early August, then where we decide? Let's say that we find out from April being the bottom, that it's not as severe as we thought, and we, maybe it's more like a $10 million and a 15 is the bottom. Would we look at that in July or August to decide what we would scale back? Or would that just be a constant moving?
Go back on reductions?
Yeah.
Like add back into the budget?
Right. Well, I mean, to look at these and say, well, maybe we don't need the 6 million for capital. Maybe we need more like 3, something like that.
I think that'll come very close to the end of this fiscal year.
Okay.
Because we've got, we, we do believe, based on Mr. Lopez's work, that no month will achieve its prior budget baseline. So we won't be back to what we thought we were going to be in any given month. So I think we'll, as we make the adjustments for the year-end, we'll probably take a look and say, okay, well, it was X number of dollars. Now we know the deficit was X, preferably less than 15 million. And then there'll be a conversation with you all about how do we achieve that figure? And I think our proposal would be operating cuts first.
Yeah.
And then we look at the cash and the capital projects in tandem with you in a conversation to decide where you wanted to balance the rest of it. Probably the scenario is, I mean, one, one option would be use some of the cash, but not all. Cancel some capital projects, but not the full 5.6. And those would just be based on council priorities and which way you wanted the financial program to go.
And I know it's early, but looking at, looking at next year, I know kind of the projection range was between 115 to 120 million dollar budget, which is quite down from the prior year. But are we still looking in that range? Or are we looking to maybe that's more confident of being like, say, 120 to 130?
You know, as we sit here tonight, Mr. Posey, I think our posture is that we need to go into next year very, very lean and pray for a nice mid-year surprise, where we find that we have excess revenue versus forecast, which, which really goes back to your first question. That's why we would want to start with the operating cuts now, rather than taking it out of operating, putting it back. And it really wouldn't be time to spend it anyway at that point in the fiscal cycle. So we want to get lean, because we think we need to be lean going into FY21. If we do a mid-year review and bring you great numbers, and we'll all celebrate, and we'll look at some other priorities. But we'd rather be in that posture than to be coming to you at the mid-year saying, eh, revenue's not there, let's talk about what to cut again.
I think that's why, that's why we do that. So that's good.
Yes. And that's, I mean, all of that will be worked out, of course, with Mr. Lyda's input as finance chair. We're going to be talking to him very soon, as the budget process ramps up, about where we're going to try to be in the possibility of some type of mid-year conversation at the six-month mark.
Six months from?
Six months into next fiscal year. Yes. Six months.
We already missed six months for this year.
Oh, yes, sir. No, six months from October 1.
Mr. Lyda, I've got a question. Since the administration is bringing a capital figure, does that mean that the Finance Committee will not be needing to talk about capital? I thought up to this point, we were just voting on operating saves. So are we now including capital? Overall, I had been of the understanding, obviously I could be wrong, but I thought that the council was one to determine the capital cuts.
Certainly, I think it's worthy of a mutual collective conversation.
Yes, I know. I haven't been involved in that.
I think that would be a fair conversation. However, your take there, I think is worthwhile.
What we've done up to this point, Mr. President, is provide you with those three groupings of the $18 million in currently allocated capital spending. And, you know, we continue to reiterate, that's just our take on Group 1, 2, 3. And now we're putting them on your desk for you to determine what, how much, in what order. That is completely the purview of the council. Your vote tonight on the budget amendment only deals with operating. The number that's there now for capital, 5.6 million, would be a potential future number. We might come to you and say, hey, we need this or some portion of it if the deficit were to approach 15 million. And at that point in time, you all would tell us, cut this one, cut that one, keep this one, you know, that kind of. That would be.
I was, I was still on points, so thank you.
I would say I want to be cautious about that conversation until we have to have it. And look at those, and then really make a better determination.
Right.
I don't want to cut something and have a headline that we cut it, then we do.
Right. I believe Mr. Lyda had also mentioned an investment year in the middle as well, prior to any comment. All right, very good.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Anything else in the report section? If not, then we're going to handle the consent agenda. The consent agenda is voted together. There's a paragraph there that you can read on your agenda. Mr. Corley, if you would handle our legal responsibilities, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Item 7 is the payment of the bills. Item 8 is Resolution 626520, which authorizes the mayor to execute renewal documents with the Lion Insurance Services for Stop-Loss Insurance Policy for the city of Hoover. Item 9 is Resolution 626620, which authorizes the mayor to execute renewal documents with Alliance Global Corporate and Specialty Insurance Company for an unmanned aircraft insurance policy for the city of Hoover. Item 10, Resolution 626720, authorizes the mayor to execute renewal documents with Hartford Insurance Company for the city of Hoover Prime Insurance Policy for the city of Hoover. Resolution 626820, authorizes the mayor to purchase cloud storage devices needed to replace current existing devices. Item 12, Resolution 626920, authorizes the mayor to purchase 30 switches for the telecommunications closets with three-year hardware maintenance for the total expenditure not to exceed that set forth in the resolution. Item 13, Resolution 625320, authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with Charter Communications Operating LLC Spectrum for renewal of internet services at Finley Center and the Public Safety Center in substantially the form attached as Exhibit A to the resolution. Item 14 is Resolution Number 627120, which authorizes the mayor to fill seven vacant seasonal crew worker positions for Parks and Recreation Department.
President, I move for approval of all items on the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there a particular reason that number 13 is highlighted?
That was shown in the, it was shown that it was. That's correct. It was what was heard about a month ago.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dispost nay. The ayes have it. Now we're going to move on to our regular agenda. We have a number of public hearings where those that are here will be able to speak, as will those of you looking online through your Zoom meeting. The gentleman that is controlling the cameras tonight does not have a microphone, though he will not be able to call on you. Will do so when it's time. One statement that I would like to make for the remainder of this meeting to include public comments, that should anyone initiate any profanity in their conversation, you will either be asked to leave, or you will be immediately dropped if you're online. I know we're all good people, I just wanted to put that out there. So, Mr. Corley, Resolution 625820.
This resolution declares a public nuisance on the properties described in the resolution and orders the abatement of such as provided under Alabama law.
Move for approval of Resolution 625820?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Mack, Robert Mack. I understand today is his 18th birthday. Congratulations.
Yes, sir. We have nine properties we heard tonight. These are the first hearing for all of them. This is where you declared a public nuisance. And I did visit each property today. The photo was taken today. They all received notice about these properties. A couple of them, if you see a rear photo, the rear yard, it was, the front had been cut, but the rear was still in violation. But still on there.
There is another piece of property that I want to have some discussion here during the meeting, but since it's not on this agenda, it had been. We'll talk about it after we're through with this item.
Yes, sir. That's fine.
Any questions for Mr. Mack? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dispost nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Mack, previously, 2335 Deerwood Road had been in. Mr. Mack, previously twenty-three thirty-five Deerwood Road had been included. I have personally met with several residents over there. Uh, you had mentioned one of these properties that the backyard was, uh, not where you would like it.
Yes, sir.
Um, they're of the opinion that the backyard of this property as well, not to mention the state of the dwelling itself, is in major disrepair. Should it have been on this agenda as far as the backyard is concerned?
Yes, sir. Um, I've talked to the, I believe the same lady that you have, and we've discussed it. It has, the front yard has been cleared. I, I do have a photo as of today. The rear yard, she, she did, like you said, discuss the backyard and it's, it does have a drop off, but it is enough that we can consider it. And I have reopened it. I, I did close it at the time, you know, when it was originally on y'all's agenda. I closed it, but we have reopened according to the, where y'all will be able to hear that one. And the house will be addressed under the IPMC and our normal zoning code. So I do have some open complaints on that house.
I do have two letters that these people had requested that I read aloud and then place in a minute. If we know for certain that that is coming back.
Yes, sir.
Uh, no matter what they do to the backyard, I want to make sure that these end up being placed in the record.
Uh, yes, sir.
That, so.
There, there's enough that it can be, it already has been reopened.
Okay.
And concerning the weeds in the backdrop laying behind the house.
And I will deal with that text. We figured two weeks, a month.
Yes, sir. Um, the weeds will be, you know, coming right back up. And then they get, they have a timeline, a short timeline on the garage doors. I gave them two weeks where they had some items that I addressed there, garage doors and the steps.
That's the front windows.
And front windows, yes, sir. All three of those.
You have, you have a legal way to access inside of dwelling to check on whether or not it's even habitable?
Um, that's going to be a little tougher. I'll, I'll work with the attorneys to whether we can get in. Um, because, you know, whether there's immediate safety hazard on that.
Right.
But the, you know, we can look into that, getting into the house. It is secure. We do have broken windows, garage doors and deck all need to be addressed.
That's fall off.
Yes, sir.
All right. Then I will hold that and hopefully, um, are either Ms. Beauregard or Ms., uh, or Ms. Deegan, are they on? Can you tell if they're on the call?
I'm not for sure if they are or not. I spoke with Ms. Deegan after five and sent them basic instructions, so I'm not.
I don't know if you can hear me.
Deegan and Beauregard.
I don't know if you can hear me, but this is.
Yes, ma'am.
Deegan, I am on the call.
This is Ms. Deegan?
Yes, I am on the call.
Okay. So do you understand where things are?
Yes, I do. I understand where things are. You know, this is a long-term issue. And I, I do appreciate, uh, Mr. Smith, all of your work on this and consideration. And I did talk with Mr. Mack last week, so, um, I'm glad to hear that we're moving forward. And I appreciate, uh, that this will be back on to address the backyard in a couple of weeks. Um, and as well as all the other issues. So I, I do understand where we are and I appreciate the council.
Thank you.
Consideration of this.
And the letters will be placed, uh, in the minutes of that meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Beauregard, you're not here, are you? All right. I didn't think so. I believe she had a conflict. All right. So, uh, public hearing, we've been conducting our public hearing. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the public hearing aspect? Hearing none. Uh, we will now go into the item, resolution sixty-two fifty-eight twenty. And chair is open for a motion.
We all voted on.
I think we already did.
Yes, y'all voted on that one. We're at ordinance number twenty dash twenty-four.
Okay, so we voted the weeds.
That's correct.
Yes, yes, because this was outside of that. Very good. Ordinance twenty dash two four eight three, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance authorizes the execution of an inter-jurisdictional automatic and mutual fire and EMS aid agreement with the city of Birmingham in the form attached to the ordinance as exhibit one. For approval ordinance, I'm sorry, move for adoption ordinance two four eight three dash two zero.
Okay.
Okay, uh, this is, uh, just a standard mutual response and mutual aid agreement with city of Birmingham. We already have, uh, the very same agreements with the city of Pelham, city of Helena, um, Ahaba Valley Fire District and North Shelby Fire District. I'm not sure if we have anything with Vestavi. Do we, Mayor? If we do, okay. This, this, this will be the, this finishes, this finishes the last hole in the chart. So we, and this is one of the reasons that allowed Hoover to get a class one fire rating as well, having these agreements. So, um, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Anything from the audience? Anything from anyone online? Thing and hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrook?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next, we have, uh, ordinance twenty dash two four seven seven, a public hearing and then a likely vote. Now, Mr. Starling contacted the clerk's office today and said that he would not be able to attend and that if that was detrimental to a vote, he would prefer to have it continued to the next meeting. If the body does not feel that he needs to be here in person, then we can go ahead and hold our public hearing. Hearing none, uh, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the pre-zoning of nineteen nineteen and nineteen twenty-one Shannon Road? That is the property for the old Shannon Volunteer Fire Department.
I do have three letters of opposition.
We have sent them to. We'll place those in a minute.
Yeah.
Very good. And what was the basis? I know that, that I've read them and understand them. I just know, Corley, do we need to put anything other than placing those documents in a minute? Does anything need to settle out? All right. Very good. So we will end this public hearing and now, uh, look for a motion for ordinance twenty dash two four seven seven.
President, I move for adoption of ordinance twenty dash two four seven seven.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Once again, any comments or questions from the council, from the audience, from those online?
Mr. Smith, to clarify, this ordinance pre-zones the properties at nineteen twenty-one Shannon Road to Hoover C-one Neighborhood Shopping District. This ordinance shall become effective upon the passage by the city council on approval of mayor and also the publication of the ordinances required by law and the annexation of this property into the city.
Very good. Any additional comments or questions, anyone online? Anyone in the audience? Thing and hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This is the pre-zoning.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrook?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy? Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next is resolution six-two five-five dash twenty. This will be a public hearing and an additional likely vote. Mr. Corley. Right? We need to annex it. I thought that's what we were talking about. Uh, oh, no, I've already, okay. Twenty, ordinance twenty dash two four eight one, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance alters, rearranges and extends the corporate limits of the city of Hoover to embrace the territory described on exhibit A of the ordinance and located at nineteen twenty-one Shannon Road that is owned by Vernon and Tim Starling.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of ordinance number twenty dash two four eight one.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Anyone online? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrook?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy? Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. Resolution passes. Um, next, we have resolution six-two five-five dash two zero, a public hearing and likely vote. Mr. Corley.
This resolution grants a conditional use approval for an amenity center at Abington by the River subdivision as requested by SB death court.
Uh, first, a public hearing, uh, how are you, sir? Come on up. Give a better name and pretty much where you live.
Hey, good evening. My name is Jonathan Belcher. I'm representing Signature Homes. Our address is three five four five Market Street, Hoover, three five two two six. Uh, here tonight to request the approval of our, um, new amenity building at our Abington by the River community located off Stadium Trace Parkway. Uh, the, um, this is a continuation of the Abington community, which was our first uh, age-restricted neighborhood that we built on the north side of Stadium Trace Parkway. Uh, happy to share with you that we had a hundred home sites there, which we started last May and plan to complete the, um, the one hundred home at the end of August this year. So seeing months, it was very successful. Uh, this particular amenity building will be offered to those residents as an option for use. Also, uh, primary use is for the hundred and ninety, uh, homes that we're planning on building in this Abington by the River, uh, community. Uh, the building itself is a little over seven thousand square feet of heated and cooled space. Uh, we're planning on having a indoor-outdoor pool that will be heated, uh, through the times of the year when necessary, uh, covered, uh, from a shade standpoint, just protection from UV rays. Uh, it's got, uh, four different living spaces, uh, indoor and outdoor exercise facilities that will be there. Uh, event lawn outside and outdoor putting green, uh, a one point seven acre lake that it's adjoining. So we think it'd be a great amenity for the community.
About that, and yes, you guys, well, Lauren just thought that there weren't people coming.
I'm sorry? Okay. Thank you.
And so, um, it's, the, the project itself is about a three million dollar construction project. It'll be the largest, um, amenity that we've created so far of any of the communities that we've developed and available. Three other questions you may have.
Doesn't this going to have, uh, connection with the city's, uh, walkway along the river?
Yes, sir. The, the phase two of that is under construction now. We plan to have those open this fall. Uh, and there will be numerous connection points along this community as well, in addition to connection to this.
A hundred structures in eighteen months. That shows that there's a strong need for those type of residential, uh, homes. Y'all are going to need that sometime.
We, we agree. That was, uh, if you remember, we moved a hundred and fifty-five of the home sites from the Black Ridge, uh, medium density area to this location because we saw such strong demand for the product itself.
This is a public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? We did go into a good amount of detail on Thursday with, uh, Mr. Martin. Uh, anyone online care to speak to the amenities at Abington? All right. We will end the public hearing and, uh, Mr. Corley, do you have any additional legal responsibilities?
Yes, sir.
And the chair is open for a motion.
President, I move for, uh, adoption of approval of resolution number sixty-five five dash twenty.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Once again, any comments or questions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrook?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Congratulations, Mr. Belcher. Another fine project.
Thank you.
Next, we have, uh, resolution sixty-two sixty dash twenty, Mr. Corley.
We, we have.
Ordinance twenty dash two four seven nine.
Yes, sir. This ordinance amends the zoning ordinance of the city of Hoover, Alabama, to allow for special events within the city as set forth therein.
All right. Well, first, we're going to have a public hearing. Um, there's, uh, Mr. Martin. Come on down. I know we went into good detail on Thursday, but we could do the short version for those that are participating tonight.
Sure thing. Uh, the ordinance amendment for you tonight, uh, would be to, uh, separate out temporary events uh, lasting no more than three continuous days, uh, from the conditional use requirements of the zoning ordinance, which they call under today. Uh, this would, uh, divert those over to an, uh, administrative process that we currently have in place for properties taking, uh, events taking place on public property right now. Uh, so we already have the application and the process in place to put these temporary events under that, uh, that column.
We identified Thursday and previous to this that we're going to need to look at the noise ordinance. Should anybody hold an event before the noise ordinance has, uh, some corrections made? Uh, how would the administration handle any complaints at that point? Would they be enforced or what would be the intent?
Right. We'll be working with those event organizers to ensure that we don't have the amplified sound that's going to run uh, contrary to what the noise ordinance has to say.
Fifty feet is not far.
Pardon?
Fifty feet isn't far.
It's, it's not, not if it's taking place in a vehicular area.
Yes, sir. All right. This is a public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from anyone online? Anyone care to speak to the special events live entertainment ordinance? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
I, I need a first and second.
President, I move for adoption of ordinance number twenty dash two four seven nine.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Once again, any comment from the council, from the audience, from those at home? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrook?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy? Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Resolution sixty-two sixty dash twenty, Mr. Corley.
This resolution amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two, twenty twenty, as shown on exhibit A attached to the resolution. President, I move for approval of resolution sixty-two sixty twenty.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, this is the amendment, uh, amending this current fiscal year budget that ends September thirtieth, twenty twenty. I know there was, uh, a lot of information passed in the, uh, in the comments section. Ms. Bolt, do you have anything in addition? Can? If you want. That's all of you. You don't have to. You, you don't have to. Any questions for Ms. Tina? I think the, the information that you gathered, uh, was well presented. It's unfortunate that we have to go through this, but hopefully the city will recover nicely. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Anyone online?
Are you receiving me?
I'm sorry?
I'd like to ask a question.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Your name and address, please.
In, in light of your comments in this meeting today concerning.
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry. My name is John Fox Williams. My address is two eight four eight Regal Circle, apartment D.
Thank you.
Now, uh, given the comments made at this meeting today, uh, concerning the potential budget cuts that may go into the following, uh, year, and also in light of the numerous protests that have been on Municipal Drive in this, in these past few weeks, I wanted to ask if there may be, if there's any plans to scrutinize the police budget in this city.
The police department budget has been affected, just like every other department in the city.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else online? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed nay? Dis opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The resolution passes. Now, we are open to comments and questions, first from the council. Anyone have anything that they would like to bring up? Hearing none. Is there anybody from the in-person audience that would care to speak? All right, sir, if you please come down and give your name and address.
Yes, my name is Wade Morgan. I live at 3150 Sawyer Drive in Hoover and I wanted to take a moment to address some of the events that have been happening in the city. The outcry against the criminal act of one rogue police officer in another state has been loud and it's been an outcry as it should. Officers who commit things like this should be prosecuted immediately and to the fullest extent of the law. But as the outrage and protests grew over Mr. Floyd's death, some protesters turned to violence. Places across the country began being assaulted, attacked and murdered by the very people that they choose to serve daily and even while safeguarding protesters' rights to assemble and protest. I watched right here in Hoover as protesters stood face-to-face with our officers, cursed them, screamed at them, threw things at them, and I know of at least one officer that was hurt, not because of anything that, that these men and women did, but merely because they choose to serve the city of Hoover. And let's be honest, very few people have a professional contact with the police that goes well. What I mean by that is you're either a victim of a crime, you're a criminal, or you've probably been in a traffic accident or gotten a ticket for a traffic violation. And any one of those things means you're not having a real good day. And a lot, for a lot of people, that's the only interaction they will have with the police. And with most of those, that's, they're the victim of a crime. They're traumatized and we are very fortunate to have officers in this city that are compassionate, that are professional and respond without regard to one's race, sexual orientation or anything else. They operate in a professional manner and serve all the members of our community. People across the country, and I've even heard it here in Hoover, have been calling to defund police departments and why I think that's one of the most insane things I've heard of in my life. You, our elected officials and including the mayor, have a duty and responsibility to us, the citizens, to properly fund our public safety. And primarily, I'm talking about police tonight, but that also includes our fire department because they get caught up in, in some of this as well. Having a city that is safe to live in, safe to shop in, safe to work in, safe to play benefits everyone. And unfortunately, while Hoover is a very safe community, we, that comes at a price. And that price is in the terms of funding. And we need to fund our police officer salaries and benefits. And I know last year, after the salary study was completed, significant raises were, were given to our public safety officials. That was incredible and I appreciate that. It also requires funding, training. I know our police department trains and has some of the best trained officers in the state, if not the nation. But that training does not come cheap. And if you want to have a professional department that is not under a constant investigation by, by the Justice Department or whatever, we have to have professionally trained officers and I'm thankful that we do. And we also have to have funding for their equipment. I know that we have some of the best outfitted officers in this, in the state and I appreciate that as a citizen. But I submit to you as our leaders that our Hoover police officers, the men and women who choose to come to work every day to serve our community, do an outstanding job, day in, day out, each month, every day, call after call. They do it professionally, they do it compassionately to the community they serve. They do this when events that happen across the country that has nothing to do with these men and women cause hostility toward them. They're still out there maintaining peace while protecting people's rights to express their grievances against the government in form of protest. Finally, I just want to say that I challenge each and every one of you, mayor included, to defend our police, not defund them, to stand behind these men and women that make Hoover a safe place to live, that make Hoover an attractive place to work, relocate businesses, to build new homes so that people want to be here, to show that public safety is a top priority by your budget decisions. And finally, to be vocal in the support of our police and individual officers. I know that Councilman Posey put out a statement about the funding for the police department compared to other departments in the state. And we are significantly lower in funding per resident than some of the other cities, but we have one of the safest cities and that goes a lot to say for these men and women who work out here in our neighborhood. As you balance the budget shortfalls that are, that will happen because of the pandemic, I want to remind you that public safety should not and cannot be compromised. Budget hearings will be starting soon, I expect, for next year and the public will be watching to see what the mayor's priorities will be in the budget as well as what the council's response to that is. Thank you.
Anyone else here, person, care to speak? Seeing no one. Is there anyone online that would care to speak?
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Please give your name and address.
My name's Summer Bowman. I live at 609 Bonnybrook Drive in Bluff Park.
Thank you.
I was wondering, the current budget that you're adjusting through September 30th, does that have any adjustments specifically made to the police department as a result of the ongoing protests?
It is a result of the COVID illness issues that has affected the entire city and the entire city budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone online? Once again, anything from the council?
Let me make one, one comment, Mr. President. One addition I want to make is, it was a comment about many of the interactions that citizens encounter with police are typically from a negative standpoint. There's one correction to that. Many of other interactions are from a quality standpoint as well, too. We have so many officers that are in SROs, particularly individuals that helped at a particular school to ensure a grant was given there. We have officers that changed tires on the side of the road. Officers do a lot of engaging things in the community. So it's, it's not just from a negative point of view in the sense that's always discussed about, but I did want to make that correction. I've had the pleasure several times to ride beats with officers at, at night, at Fort Mill, to kind of see how things are operated and the way they handle different traffic stops to just pulling up beside somebody and say, hey, look, your taillight is out, I mean, your light is out or cut your lights on and they're driving off, not pulling them over and checking anything. So I just want to make sure we address that as well and not leave it from that standpoint.
Anything else from the council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Green.
Just following Mr. Murphy. I think the bottom line, and I believe that I speak for everyone sitting on this council, if I don't, please let me know, but we support our police 100%. I think they have done an excellent job through some very, very trying circumstances and I can just not say how proud I am of our police department. And I believe I'll speak for the entire council. Thank you, officers.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Once again, anyone online? If not, we're going to adjourn. Thank you. We adjourn.